Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Cablecast Post Agenda for Tuesday, September 22, 2020. My name is Michael Wentz and with us today is Logan Showalter, our sign language interpreter. The post agenda will be on the following matter. Discussion on community and occupational lead hazards. This concludes the reading for the Cablecast Post Agenda for Tuesday, September 22, 2020. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Oh, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Post Agenda on lead and lead safety. Not only will this affect the visitors in the city of Pittsburgh, but also the entire region. We have a great panel with us today. We're going to talk about a number of issues involving lead. I know the biggest one for us, obviously, with PWSA for so many years has been lead in our pipes, but we also want to discuss lead seen other places. And a lot of people forget about that. I also see that Councilwoman Deborah Gross joined in and she is actually co-sponsoring this Post Agenda with us. And I want to thank her for her leadership while she was at PWSA and now just talking about the lead issue overall. So we have four great panelists. We're going to pass it off to Michelle right now to explain what the panelist's background is going to be, what they're going to talk about, and then from there, after their presentations, we'll open it up to council members. I also want to, first of all, thank Michelle for setting this up. A number of great organizations helped us to get this ready. We're also joined by Councilwoman Erica Strasburger as well. So this is a really important meeting for us. I think it's good to get information about lead just within our own system locally, but also ways in which we can fix this problem in the future with regards to hopefully some future legislation. So I'm going to pass it off to Michelle to introduce the great guests and allow them to do their presentation, and then we'll have comment from council members after. So Michelle, please take it away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you to all of the council members that are here joining us this afternoon. We appreciate your attendance to learning more about the topic. Thank you, Council O'Connor and Councilwoman Gross for your sponsorship of today's event and discussion. And I wanted to just give a brief introduction of our guests that are here today. Dr. Bruce Lanfier, you'll see in your corner, there you go, will be speaking to you about the health impacts of lead from a scientific perspective. He is the expert in terms of health impacts and has done much research from a scientific perspective as well as from pediatrician's perspective in terms of the issue, and will share more with us about his research and findings over the many, many, many years and decades. We'll also hear from Mr. Len Merritt. Thank you, from the city of Rochester. And Rochester's really been known as the gold standard, and that is what many cities look to and look to their experience and how they have enacted lead ordinances. Many cities have used that as models across their city and in terms of understanding the various ways that all of the systems in a city work together to making primary prevention a strategy and a tool for preventing lead exposure. So thanks to you as well. Next, we'll hear from Ms. Lori Horowitz, and she is with the Allegheny County Health Department in the Housing Division. And that division certainly sees folks in their homes as a release to when a child is identified with an elevated blood level, essentially known as lead poisoning. And so when that happens, a home investigation occurs. And so her team are the ones who go out into the home and identify the source of lead and work with the families to resolving that situation. And then I'll just wrap up with a closing in terms of what we can do and some ideas for next steps. And again, my name is Michelle Nakarati Chapkus, and I'm Executive Director at Women for a Healthy Environment. And we help to run and support the Get the Lead Out Pittsburgh campaign, which is a public-facing campaign to help the community learn and understand more about lead. And I also am Chair of the Lead Safe Allegheny Coalition, which we'll hear a little bit more about today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lanfier.
All right. Thank you very much, Michelle. And I'm just delighted to be here and to see this, all the council members who are dealing with this seriously. I'm going to go ahead and start sharing my screen. And I'm going to try to be brief today. I will not deal with, I'm sure, some of the details that you'd like to know about. I would be happy to meet with you at a later time around specific questions, but I just wanted to get a, just an overview. And it really is about the lingering legacy of lead. Haven't we solved this problem? Haven't blood levels come down by so much that we don't have to worry anymore? Well, what we've found as blood levels have plummeted over the past five or six decades is that we can begin to find effects at lower and lower levels. And that's what I want to talk about today. The peak of the lead pandemic was really in the 1960s, and it's not a coincidence that that was also the peak of the coronary heart disease epidemic. They are related. What we've seen since then, of course, is that blood levels have come down as lead was taken out of first gasoline and then paints and then lead service lines, consumer products, and so on. But what we're now dealing with is this lingering legacy, this remaining problem that still contaminates our cities. Now, this graphic shows you how, as blood levels increase from zero up to 40, we see the sharp decrement at the lowest levels in children's intellectual ability or cognitive abilities. And this really is counterintuitive and different than the way most of us were trained. Most of us were trained to think that there are going to be safe levels or thresholds. And what we're finding for some of the most well-studied and widely disseminated toxic chemicals, whether it's lead or air pollution, is that there is not a safe level. And if we want to protect our citizens, and we have to begin to ask questions about the lowest levels of exposure. Now, we put together this very short, this is a little clip of a video, just to show how this works because it's a little counterintuitive. So let's give this a shot, and I hope the volume comes through. The largest drop in IQ from lead exposure occurs at the lowest levels. As the level of lead in children's blood increases from 0 to 100 parts per billion, IQ scores drop by about six points. In contrast, an increase from 100 to 200 parts per billion results in an IQ drop of two more points. An increase from 200 to 300 parts per billion results in an IQ drop of another point. In fact, the World Health Organization and other agencies agree, there is no safe level of lead exposure. So, parts per billion, we can think of as in microgram per deciliter. So 100 part per billion is equivalent to 10 microgram per deciliter. There is a lot that goes on, even at these very low levels. And that shouldn't surprise us. These three cartoons in front of you represent, each of those little dots on a child represent 40 micrograms of lead in the bones of those children, of those cartoons. The one with the most dots, I think it's going to be on your far right, that represents a lead-poisoned child. The child in the center represents a typical child, 1960. So many of us were born at that time. The child on the far left with one dot in the middle of their chest, that represents a pre-industrial child. We are still today 10 to 100 times more heavily exposed to lead than our pre-industrial ancestors. The levels that we're seeing today are not low on an evolutionary scale. This is probably the seminal study of childhood lead exposure and its toxic effects. And it was done by Herb Needleman and his colleagues who were at the University of Pittsburgh, well, Herb was, when he published it. And what he saw was that as the amount of lead in children's teeth, in school-aged children's teeth increased, they had increasingly more problems with following directions, being hyperactive, impulsive, being a daydreamer. What he essentially showed back in 1979 was that lead was a risk factor for ADHD. What we did is we looked at a national study, and what we found is if you compare the lowest 33rd percentile, that's in the blue curve, with the highest 33rd percentile of children in the United States, we see a subtle shift in the number of ADHD symptoms. A typical child with ADHD will have about 15 symptoms. So this shift, this shift in lead exposure from the lowest third to the highest third resulted in a difference of the mean number of symptoms, of one symptom in the lowest group to three symptoms in the highest group. It doesn't seem like that big of a deal, does it? But now, let's look at the tail. What you can see is the difference in the fraction of children in the lowest group having ADHD is about 5%. But that shift in lead exposure, which holds other factors constant, more than doubled. So now, 13% of kids in that high-risk group met criteria for ADHD because of lead exposure. Now, one of the things we've been learning over the past two to three decades is that toxic chemicals don't operate in isolation. So this next slide looks at children in the blue curve, the number of symptoms of children in the blue curve who had low lead exposure and no prenatal tobacco exposure. That is their mothers didn't smoke. And on average, they only had about one ADHD-type symptom. Children who were in the top 3% to 3% of children with blood levels and whose mothers smoked had a mean of six ADHD-type symptoms, right? But that's only half the picture. Now, let's go back to the tail. When we look at the difference in the children who met criteria for ADHD, one in four children with both exposures, high exposures to lead and their mother smoked during pregnancy, one in four children met criteria for ADHD. We were also able to calculate what percent of children in the United States had ADHD as a result of lead exposure. And we estimated about one in five children with ADHD had ADHD because of lead exposure. Now, imagine, if you will, for a moment, if I had created a vaccine or a drug that could prevent one out of five cases of ADHD, that's about 600,000 cases of ADHD, I would be wealthy. I'd probably have endowed chairs being thrown after me, probably wouldn't win the Nobel Prize, but maybe. Well, we got a little scholarly attention, but not much more than that. And what that speaks to is our willingness to invest in technologies which are profitable, but our unwillingness to invest in reducing exposures simply because they are beneficial to society, but no particular industry might benefit. And that's one of the biggest dilemmas, I think, we have in public health today. Now, this is a study of over 9,000 children, including some children in the city of Pittsburgh. And what we did is we looked at neighborhood level of risk to lead exposure, largely based on age of housing. And then we looked at the size of the brain cortical area and the volume, the overall volume of brains. And what we saw is that those children who lived in high-risk areas for lead exposure and who were lower income, we saw significant reductions in brain size, brain volume, as lead exposure risk increased, but only among the low-income children. We also know from a study in Bristol, England, that pregnant women who had a blood level greater than five microgram per deciliter, or 50 parts per billion, were almost two times more likely to have a child who was born preterm. This is huge. Preterm birth is about 12% in the United States. We keep trying to find risk factors, but we failed to acknowledge risk factors like lead and other toxic chemicals. We keep dismissing those and focusing on, we've got to find a new drug. Well, no problem finding a new drug, but let's stop ignoring these well-established risk factors like lead. Well, speaking of ignoring things associated with lead, we know that lead is a risk factor, particularly for coronary heart disease. That is atherosclerosis of the coronary vessels that leads to heart attacks. Coronary heart disease is the leading cause of death in the United States. It's the leading cause of death worldwide. We know that it's a risk factor for both hypertension, which is a risk factor, as well for heart attacks and coronary heart disease, and coronary heart disease itself. Because in laboratory studies, dosing animals with lead enhances atherosclerosis by inactivating nitric oxide, inhibiting the repair of the inside of the vessels, the arteries, impairing new blood vessel growth or angiogenesis, and promoting thrombosis or clots. That's the classic mechanisms, and that's what leads to coronary heart disease. And yet, no studies had calculated the number of premature deaths from coronary heart disease attributable to lead exposure until just a few years ago. And what we saw, again, was a steep increase in risk at the lowest measurable levels. No evidence of a safe level, no evidence of a threshold. And I want to show you another quick video here to play that out. Lead is also a risk factor for coronary heart disease. That's when your heart is slowly or suddenly suffocated by an obstruction of the arteries feeding the heart. In a national study, we found that deaths increased sharply at blood levels below 50 parts per billion, the level considered safe. There was no threshold or safe level. If we let the narrowing of this coronary artery represent the risk of dying from heart disease, you can see that most of the narrowing occurs below 50 parts per billion. We found that lead accounts for about 185,000 deaths every year. That makes lead the leading cause of fatal heart attacks in the United States. So even though we focus mostly on children, we know that pregnant women and adults are also vulnerable to lead. I want to end up with a couple slides that just try to provide a perspective on this. Long before I even got involved in studying the impact of lead exposure, there were agencies that would battle over who was responsible. In the 1970s, the EPA did not want to treat lead as a criteria pollutant, as an air pollutant, and they said lead was a housing problem. Housing and urban development, HUD, they didn't want to deal with it either. They said it was an environmental problem. And even among many of us scientists, we oftentimes get caught up in, no, it's mostly soil, it's mostly lead, I'm sorry, it's mostly water. But in fact, it's all of these things, and we need to, if we want a comprehensive strategy to protect children and the rest of us, we need to address all of these things at the same time. Now, the recipe to do so, the steps needed to take are fairly straightforward. First, we need to set a goal for all children. We could start out with what the National Summit, Lead Summit, did, which is to say, by 2030, no child should have a blood level above one microgram per deciliter or 10 part per billion. We need a goal, we need something to shoot for. Eliminate all non-essential uses of lead and develop regulations to further control lead exposures. Not just lead in house paint and lead in water, lead in aviation gasoline that still is used widely in small regional airports, wheel weights that can contaminate the street. We also need, not only to have health-based standards, they need to be based on good science, and even the recent EPA standards are inadequate to protect children, let alone whether we have a health-based standard. The water standard that's currently used today, 15 parts per billion, is not and never was intended to be a health-based standard, period. We don't have a health-based standard for lead in water. We use 15 parts per billion, but it's not protective. We need to screen older housing units for lead hazards before purchase or occupancy, after renovation and abatement. And as you've heard from Michelle, Rochester has developed a novel approach to this and have been doing this for a number of years. And then finally develop a strategy to replace lead lines and replace or cover contaminated soil before children are exposed. And I just want to end up with a dedication to Herb Needleman, our recent video, Crime of the Century, we dedicated to Herb. And Herb has been, for me, one of my heroes, and certainly one of Pittsburgh's finest citizens. And I just wanted to acknowledge him. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. I think it's, I mean, I learned a lot just from that, and some of the numbers are pretty surprising, I'm sure, to me and my council members. I believe we are passing it off to Len now. Is that correct, Michelle?
That's right.
Okay. Len, take it away.
Thank you, everyone. First, I would like to say I cannot express what a pleasure it is to speak before you today. I would like to extend my gratitude to Pittsburgh City Council for having this presentation, and the offices of the Women for a Healthy Environment. They've been superb ever since I've known Michelle. I know her passion behind everything that she's trying to help do in the city of Pittsburgh. So I'd like to commend her especially for knowing her as long as I have, that she's in it to win it. So, but you know, this is a problem that Rochester faced as well. You know, it's not something that is new as Dr. Lanfier said. This is something that's been ongoing and that still presents a problem today. You know, 50 years ago, you know, they had the same problems that we're seeing today, and this is what most folks think has gone away simply because we've built newer homes or because, you know, maintenance has gotten a little better. Well, that may be in some cases, but for the majority of the cities in the Northeast, it still presents a huge problem when it comes to the properties that are still there. These are viable properties that unfortunately, most of our most vulnerable populations still live in, and they're the ones subjected to a lot of the lead hazards that are still located in these homes. So with that, Rochester decided, when that was brought to our attention, how many children were being lead poisoned every year. I think at that point, we had over 1,600 children being lead poisoned, that, you know, this was a contributing factor to a lot of the behavioral problems that, you know, we could easily do something about by interjecting some property maintenance into the code that would help to minimize the hazards that, or hopefully eliminate some of the hazards, lead hazards, that these children were being exposed to. And it sort of went hand in hand with what we were doing already, but not to the level that the education provided when it said that if we did A, B would occur. And so with that being said, you know, with hand in hand with the partners that were out there, the advocates that were invested in childhood lead poisoning prevention, the Coalition to Prevent Lead Poisoning, the County Health Department, the doctors that were, the pediatricians that were involved, all of the partners came to the table and said, hey, you know, we got to do something about this because we're going to lose this generation if we don't. And so although there was some pushback, because not everybody's concerned, you know, about someone's health when it comes to a property, they're more invested in what kind of profits they can turn from that. Well, you know, we understood that was going to happen. We knew people were going to push back, but it didn't deter us from the course of action that we had planned, and that was to try to protect as many of those children out there that were suffering from this scourge unneedlessly. So this is what we set out to do, and hopefully, I'm going to try to share my screen of the slides that I have available that can help us to understand how Rochester went about doing what we did to now dropping the lead poisoning rate to well below 100 every year. And just bear with me if you would. See if I can, I may need you guys to help me out here. Going to be on my.
I can try and help on this end as well if it doesn't work for you.
Okay. Yeah, I know I said that to you guys prior to this, so.
Len, you should see a share screen, the little green arrow down at the bottom, right in the center of your screen.
I've only done it once myself in all these months.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have my daughter here to help me, so.
I'll send my granddaughter.
I will, I can try and pull it up here too, certainly.
Ah, here we go.
Oh, you've got it.
Look at that. Okay, now we're cooking again. Okay, so let me see if I can sort of just toy with this just for a second here. Oh, there we go. So hopefully, everyone can, I'm sorry, what was that?
You're not, you're actually, you have to be on your screen you want to share when you do the share screen, Len. Pick out your PowerPoint, have that up, and then do your share screen.
Len, why don't I pull it up and you can just tell me next slide?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Here we go. That's why I'm a code enforcement officer. Believe it or not, my wife's a teacher, so she deals with this every day. I don't.
It went back away. It was there for a minute, went away.
Yeah, I think you had it, Michelle, if you could try it again. There you go. And if we could start it at the beginning, so.
Oh, that's me, sorry. Okay, go ahead.
So, this is, this is our presentation that we usually give to most municipalities that would like to say, you know, we'd like to take some of the finer points that Rochester had in its program to sort of, you know, help us along with ours. So we've done this multiple times over the years to municipalities as far away as Oakland, California, to recently Baltimore, Maryland. We've shared a lot of information that has helped them in their programs to sort of streamline some of the things that helped them to sort of get over the humps and bumps that we had to go through in order to get, implement our program. So some of the things that I'm going to share is hopefully things that can help you guys in Pittsburgh to understand what it was we had to go through so that you can sort of, you know, use that as some of those roadblocks that you can sort of sneak around without having to deal with what we did. So, next slide, Michelle. So the thing that we had to look at was that Rochester already had a strong code enforcement program in place. This was something that we had always had since 1984. And we also had, within our code enforcement efforts, a violation that said to any property owner that rented out a property, that you had to mitigate peeling paint. And so it was easy for us to sort of tie things in together. What we didn't have was the reasons why this was important, other than from a cosmetic standpoint. So with that, then we created types of violations that would be involved, that would sort of signify, you know, the type of work that we wanted done, and those problems that would occur, or, you know, the fines that would occur if you did not remedy those violations, the same as it would be as if you had a broken window. What would happen if you did not, you know, correct that violation within a certain period of time? We also had to interject in there the clearance standards. If we were going to do lead testing or require lead testing to be put in place, what standards would we use? And we chose EPA standards, which were the best on the market at that point in time. So that was pretty easy to deduce, is to just go ahead and use that as our starting. So that was pretty easy to deduce is to just go ahead and use that as our starting point to evaluate whether or not the properties were going to be determined at that point to be lead safe. We also had to interject in there some of the lead hazard controls that were going to be necessary when this ordinance came into being. We knew that in almost 90% of the homes, they were going to be occupied at the time. And so how do we protect the tenants? How do we protect those that are already living in that property? We also wanted to make sure that the people who were doing the work, whether it was the owner, whether it was someone he or she hired. How are they going to protect themselves? And also protect the work area that they were doing the work in. So using, let's say, work practices, which was something that EPA and HUD tied in together back in the 90s. This was gonna be pretty easy for us to do. Only thing we had to do was to ensure that people were well educated and how to use those best practices. We also wanted to start this program with data to back us up. To say this is where the problems are. And not only that, but this is where the highest level of properties are. So we didn't start this on a citywide level. We started it in a smaller area that we determined would be the highest risk area that had the most lead poisoning cases, childhood lead poisoning cases. And we would start there. So it was not a large area that we did within the city at that time. It was a smaller area, and I think this would be beneficial to most municipalities. Because then you could actually see more clearly what your results are gonna be. And also, you can also more easily use the resources that you have at this point to, you know, be more precise as to what you want to do. And so this is, this is what we started out at first. And then obviously it expanded to larger areas of the city to where we are now, which is about 70% of the city. That has to get lead tested whenever a three-year period occurs. Next slide. So we started with some presumptions, as I think most people would would know if you know anything about lead and its effects, as Dr. Lanfier has just illustrated so so well for us. Most pre-1978 homes has some lead in there. It may not be in every room, may not be on every wall, ceiling, component in that property. But in most cases, you'll find that there is some level of lead in that home. And so we start with a presumption that if the owner cannot tell us through a risk assessment that there is no lead. Our inspectors go out on that premise is that we're going to assume that lead is in that home. And that then starts our visual inspections. We will determine by that inspection that we would do in any normal course of entry in that property. Whether it's for a certificate of occupancy inspection, whether it's for a complaint inspection. If we get inside, we're going to enact a visual inspection to determine whether or not there's any deteriorated paint violations. And if you have not had a lead test in there within the last three years, then we're gonna perform one for you. We also check the exterior of the property because that's just as, you know, problematic as the interior can be with deteriorated paint. And so we'll check all of the surfaces of the exterior, the porches, any sheds or anything that is painted on the exterior fence. And all of these things, our inspectors are well versed in how to do that. All of them are certified. They're all lead dust sampling technicians or lead inspectors or risk assessors. We do all of that in-house. So I train as well as one of my staff members here, we do all of our training. So we save the city a bunch of money instead of hiring a private company to come in and teach and certify us. We do all of it in-house. So moving on with the violations, we used the exact same things that EPA and HUD have combined to share with us. And we use deteriorated paint as that signal. Now, we know that with the RRP rule, the renovation, repair and painting rule, that they use a little bit different scenario when it comes to square footage of what needs to be used as far as let's say work practices or having certifications. Well, we wanted to be a lot more restrictive when it came to that because we knew how serious the problem was when it came to deteriorated paint and its effects when it, if that paint was leaded. We knew that there would be a lot of problems with that as, again, as Dr. Lanfier has stated in his earlier presentation. It doesn't take much to affect a child in that property. We also included in there bare soil because we know that along the drip line, if the house has leaded paint on the exterior, it can pose a problem to that child if they're playing up against the house or walking or whatever the case may be, they can track some of that dust inside and the same problems exist. We also use in our violations, thus lead dust hazards, meaning that if the test fails, the owner has to re-clean and then have that property retested. If it fails again, then we exact a penalty, a fine on that property. So that that owner now has to go through other types of mitigation steps in order to remedy that violation. Next slide, please. Thank you. So we, again, as I mentioned earlier, we do all kinds of inspections. But we do them all based upon a visual inspection. Every inspector, again, is certified to do all of that. So that they're looking for these types of issues when they go inside of a home or on a property. Even though we do, we have a designated lead risk area, which is again 70% of the city. We look for deteriorated paint in any property that we have access to. So we're not just solely concerned about those areas where there's a lot of lead poisoning, high, you know, lead poison, childhood lead poisoning rates are. We want to make sure that even in the areas that don't have any childhood lead poisoning EBL levels in those neighborhoods that they stay that way. So there's a reason for us to do everything that we do. And but we also want to make sure that in those high-risk areas, we're testing those properties as well. Next slide, please. So as you can see from this map, all of those areas, you know, you can see where most of our EBL levels are. This is all from our county data. And again, all of this is online and anyone can go to the city of Rochester and find all of this information. And it's helpful. It's helpful to most municipalities, most municipalities to know that. If they're sharing this information, it makes more people aware. You're using your resources to educate and inform. You're helping people to know, you know, what precautions need to be taken, even if they have to move to those areas. And we know people like to move anywhere they want to. That's their right. But it's also a right to move into a safe and decent house. And so our inspectors are very good at ensuring that those properties stay that way. And we put all of this information online so that folks can can make a very good choice about where they want to live. And obviously, these numbers can change over the years based upon movement, you know, people move all the time. And owners keep their properties in very good condition. So these numbers will change and, and obviously lower. So it doesn't always equate to, you know, that somebody's gonna move into the same house and three years later is gonna have the same problems. In most cases, it won't. We don't find that happening here in Rochester. Next slide. So the remedy for our violations are pretty easy. They're not anything that's a secret. Any owner that's been in Rochester over the last 10 years, 15 years know exactly what happens. We know that everyone that can and have that kind of finance can get a risk assessment that shows that there is no lead poisoning or no lead paint in their property. That that's, we'll accept that and we'll ensure that that property stays that way. If it does not have that, then we can go out there and do a test. Or they can, the owner can get that on their own and provide that information to us. And then we can keep that on file. Most of the housing authorities' properties that we have, they go through their same mitigation process. They test all of their properties and they share all of that data with us. So we have all of those reports as well. Any exterior clearance can be done by our inspectors and we provide all of that information to the owners. And one other thing about the bare soil, we also provide the owners with mulch. We provide them with other types of vegetative coverings for their properties. So we sort of help owners out through this process, knowing that, you know, there is better for us to have some kind of assistance with them than to leave them with that property the way that it is or fighting to get it taken care of and absolutely exposing the children to that kind of condition. Next slide. So any testing that we have here, again, outside of our own inspectors, which do a lot of the testing. If there is a violation, which means that our inspectors went inside of your property and found that there was above the minimum level peeling paint, then you have to correct that paint. The owner has to correct that paint. Do it safely, do a proper cleanup and then call a company to come out and do the tests for them. They have to follow the same standards that the city would. Once that test is done, we require that they send us that report. If they don't send us that report, then we can, again, we can exact a fine on that owner. And that fine is substantial. And in a lot of cases, it's better to just go through and get your clearance than to rely on the fine or try to fight the fine because it's very easy for anyone to see what the problems are in that home. And, you know, we have all kinds of proof to show to any of the hearing examiners that the owner has a right to go to to prove that we were in the right when we cited that owner for what we did. Next slide. So again, everything about doing this work has to be done safely. In most cases, tenants do not have to move out of that property. You know, can proper containment, work site containment, that's all that's really required to do. The amount of money that the owner has to spend to do this kind of work has been proven by our data to be around $125 to $150 just to do that work. If they leave it in that condition for that long, long a period of time. If they go through and do proper maintenance every year, even, you know, if they want it to every six months. At the, the price for doing that is probably just a gallon of paint. So they're not really using a lot of money to solve this problem or to do this work. But there are precautions that need to be put in place just so that, you know, tenants can be protected while they're there. Signage is required, letting folks know that this kind of work is gonna go on. And that if there are any problems in there, the tenants can call us and let us know. And our inspectors can come out and investigate and make sure that the owners are doing the right thing when they're doing this kind of lead hazard reduction work. Next slide. So again, all of these are out of the tenants of what EPA has as their less safe work practices. I don't want to go through each of them, you know, individually. I think, you know, everyone can find this information online as easily as any of us could. So but, you know, we do have this in place, it's in our, on our website. So that anyone, even if you're thinking of buying property here in the city of Rochester, you can find this information online to help you understand that if you're gonna do this kind of work, you are required to use, let's say, work practices. You are required to protect your tenants while you're doing that work. You are required to protect their belongings. You have to do this work within a certain period of time. Once you've been cited, we don't give you a lot of time, you know, or reason to say that you can't do this work right away. We've already presented and cited you as a hazard that needs to be corrected within a certain period of time. We have three tiers of violations as far as the priority of how quickly you must mitigate that that issue. And, you know, the lead ordinance is number one on that list. So owners really don't have a lot of time to wait to do this work and neither do we allow them to. Next slide. So again, you know, these are pretty simple. We just mirrored what EPA and HUD requires when it concerns let's say work practices, the prohibited methods of paint removal and making sure that people do that. And we find that happening every so often where there's someone outside scraping and sanding and doing all of the things that cannot be done. And within our ordinance, we have you know, ways to ensure that that work stops. We have stop work orders that we can walk up to the owner and present. We also have immediate tickets that we can issue at that very same time. And what we also have is a direct connection to EPA. EPA loves to hear about this kind of activity outside. We send them all of the documentations. They follow up with an investigations and they hit people left and right. So we got so good at doing what we did that they actually stopped coming here to Rochester because we were doing a better job than they could when it came to these kinds of actions. So we're very proud of what we can do here in Rochester. Next slide. So again, a lot of things happen, you know, we know that in the wintertime, it's kind of difficult to scrape and remove peeling paint on the outside. We know that it's kind of difficult to do, you know, do any coverage of bare soil outside. So we understand that and we do provide you know, some extensions of those kinds of conditions. So that when the weather gets better, then we'll make sure that all of those issues get corrected. You know, again, that mirrors EPA's recommendations for exemptions. And, you know, we also have in there a prohibited prohibition of retaliatory action. Now, this is important because most tenants, you know, believe it or not, and I know you guys that are in the business of government know that from your talks with people that there's a lot of pressure put on tenants not to tell about violations. You know, there are threats of removing, you know, evicting them from the properties and so on and so forth. Now, this is pre-COVID-19. But, you know, the people just don't have the funds or means to move all the time or that easily. When a, when a hazard exists in their property, it doesn't really matter what the hazard is. It could be a hole in the roof, could be leakage out of plumbing fixture, could be anything, you know, that is not safe while that tenant is living there. Well, with lead, we decided to go one step further, that you cannot retaliate to a tenant who calls us and says, I want someone to come out and check my property because there's, I believe there's peeling paint here. Or I believe that the owner is out there doing work and they're not using the proper protections. they're not using the proper protections for me and my children. We'll come out there immediately and make sure that those problems are eliminated. That, that's our, that's our promise. So people aren't afraid to call us when they see that, even if they notice that their next door neighbor is doing something wrong on their property. They'll call us and let us know. So we, we're very good at that and they know that we react to those problems immediately. And I think that's one of the pieces of education and information that we provided to the public that helps us immensely when it comes to this. And we also put on our website a database that allows tenants to know whether or not their property that they want to move in has an active CFO certificate of occupancy. Or if it has been tested within the last three years and is deemed less safe. So all of that is at their fingertips to know and that information is readily available to them at any time it gets updated real time. So every day, as soon as the button's pushed, it gets put on that website and they can see that information and that it helps them. It really does because people want to know that they're moving into a less safe house, that that's one less problem that they have to worry about in the, in this day and age. So we're, we're very happy about what we've created here. And now, you know, there's always room for improvement and we certainly will be doing those things, but right now, we're, we're at a good position here in Rochester. Uh, next slide. So we couldn't do this without all of the partners here in place. This is not just code enforcement. This is not just, you know, our inspectors that are led trained. We had to have everyone on board. We, we had public forums in our city council chambers where we invited everyone. We sent out flyers, we stopped at doors. We, we, we beg people at the corner stores, come to our meetings, come hear what we're going to do, come, come and give us your feedback. We, we talked to the neighborhood associations, any, any neighborhood group that was out there that was looking at their neighborhood and making sure that, you know, the properties in their neighborhoods were, were, you know, up to code and doing things. We told them, come on, this is your time to voice, you know, and, and, and be a part of this. We didn't leave out the owners. The owners had a huge sadness. This is their property. And, and they wanted to know whether or not they were going to have problems with this new code. They, 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 they wanted to seriously know if there, if this was all going to be in the hands of the inspector who could come out there and and cite them just because. They, they had to have some assurance that that wasn't going to be the case. The real estate community, those that buy and sell properties as their business, they, they needed to know about this too, because, you know, sales happen quickly sometimes. And holding up a CFO or a sale because of, you know, deteriorated paint violations, that's not a good feel. You don't, you won't have a lot of people coming here to your city and saying, I want to buy property if you're doing those kinds of things. Investor groups, there's people that own five hundred properties here. And, you know, they, I, Rochester, I, I know most of you know, on the East Coast, that Rochester is one of the hottest markets in the, in the, in the country when it comes to buying property. You can't even dream of sailing, of selling a property before someone's knocking at your door and saying how much. We, we don't have any problems and, and so I think all of this plays hand in hand as to what we've done in the past. We also have a lead hotline, we have a lead website and even the state approves of what we're doing. We're, as Michelle mentioned earlier, Rochester is the gold standard, but you know, we take that lightly because we're, we're doing something that should have been done a long time ago and, and we shouldn't get, you know, patted on the back for that. This should have been done a long time ago and I think those municipalities that are behind should be saying the same thing. Why, why haven't we done this yet? There's no reason why we can't or shouldn't. Next slide. So with that, you know, I, I won't go through everything here on the slide, but, you know, city council had a lot to say, the landlords had a lot to say, the administration had a lot to say. And we address those issues. Those are the kinds of questions that you should expect. These are the things that people want to know. And you should have some way of giving them feedback when they ask those questions. You know, is it gonna, you know, most people don't know the difference between making a property less safe or abating lead. And, you know, with, with abatement, that's about a forty thousand to fifty thousand dollar endeavor. That's not what we're asking you. You can make your property less safe. And this is what most owners found to be the most beneficial. They've taken that as far as their business model. There wasn't an increase of people leaving their properties and saying, I'm not dealing with properties anymore. Matter of fact, the only ones that did leave were the ones who should have left. And those properties were snapped up, fixed up, got people living on them and everything is, is, as it should be. So people found that this wasn't going to be the, you know, the huge weight on their, their neck as you know, people thought when this first started, it, it never happened like that. And it shouldn't happen like that if you're giving them the right information. Next slide. So we did everything here. You can see, we had to go through everything as far as hiring a lab, ensuring that our testing policy was in place so that everybody was on the same sheet of music that we had people knowing how to do the testing and, and doing it properly. We also had a reimbursement fund upfront that helped owners when they did have to hire a private company to come out there because private companies can charge excuse me, a little bit more than what we could have given them as far as doing the free test. But, you know, we, we vetted the companies out that did the testing and made sure that everyone was pretty reasonable with their pricing and we made sure that people weren't getting ripped off by going to one of the private companies. Uh, next slide. This is just our, in, you know, inspection system here and I won't go through that because I'm not sure what Pittsburgh has at this point. But we, we do have that where our inspectors are out in the field with their own electronic information system. So we don't necessarily have to have everyone with a paper report. Everything is done electronically and everything that is done out in the field is a real time. So the moment an inspector hits a button, it's shown here in our mainframe system. Next slide. The test itself is not very expensive. You know, it didn't cost us a lot to implement our program. So if Pittsburgh is looking at that, you know, we, they can see it's not a whole lot of money that would have to be spent on, on the program such as the one Rochester has. It's very easy to do that. We do have other sources of income that helps us out. The state gives us money to help offset some of the testing that we do and some of the personnel that we have. So that's where that partnership comes in. That's going to help you out a lot. Next slide. And these are just some of the numbers. You can find this on our website as well. Next slide. Next slide. And this sort of wraps it up. You know, over the years, I'll, I'll leave with this and then we can turn off my presentation, Michelle. We, we do get audited periodically by the a center for governmental research. So they actually come out and check everything that we're doing to ensure that, you know, the numbers that we report are accurate, that our testing standards are accurate, that our folks are really certified to do the testing and, and evaluations when it comes to our reports. So we, we get looked at all the time. We get looked at by the state health department to ensure that, you know, when we go out to a properties, our inspectors aren't looking at something and saying, ah, that's okay kind of thing. We take pride in what we do and we audit ourselves. We make sure we have senior inspectors that go out and follow their staff every day to make sure that they're doing the right thing. Because we, 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 we have a, we have an obligation. We're all public servants and we, and we take that seriously. When we look at a property, we want to leave knowing that whatever family moves into that house, they're going to be in a safe and decent property. And if we can't commit ourselves to that, then we're in the wrong business. And I'll end it with that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to go to Lori now, is that correct, from the county? Lori, you ready?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I want to echo my other panelists. Thanks for convening this and having us here to speak about this extremely important issue today. So thank you for having me. Like Michelle said, my name is Lori Horowitz. I am the program manager of the Housing and Community Environment Program at the Allegheny County Health Department. And my program is the one charged with reacting to elevated blood levels in children and trying to find ways to reduce lead exposure in the county. So I want to talk about ACHD's lead strategy and then I'll, I'll give a few, some data about the county as well as the city and council districts to give you all a better picture of what we're dealing with here in Allegheny County. So ACHD's lead strategy has pretty much a three-pronged approach. So we like to look at surveillance, intervention and prevention. So with surveillance, the only way for us to know if a child has been exposed to lead is to perform that blood lead test. So we want to ensure that children are being screened at ages about one and two years old. It's when they start crawling around, touching surfaces, putting their hands in their mouths. And that's extremely essential to, to find the exposure that's happening and then act quickly to mitigate it, preventing further damage to that child. And then we also use that surveillance data to identify areas, communities, populations that are at highest risk to inform the actions we're going to be taking in the future. Then intervention, so when a child is, oh, wrong button, sorry, everybody. When a child is identified with that elevated blood level, we want to find the source of exposure rapidly, get out there and look at the home and then offer that family resources to help bring the child's blood level down quickly. And then one thing we want to look much more to in the future and the ideal strategy to dealing with lead exposure, especially as Dr. Lanfer was talking about, is reducing it in the first place, or sorry, avoiding it completely in the first place. So we want to put a, a greater emphasis moving forward. We have been recently and we want to try and push even harder towards finding ways to successfully perform primary lead prevention, uh, let exposure prevention. So just a brief history, as you're all probably aware, the, the lead, the crisis in Flint surrounding lead that happened was brought into the national spotlight around twenty sixteen. Things started in twenty fourteen, but by the time we were all hearing about it and actions were being taken was in the twenty sixteen. So it brought us some momentum to get more attention back on the issue that we all knew had not ever really gone away. So in the past five years, we've been fortunate here at the health department to use that momentum to move forward with our lead responses and activities. So in November of twenty sixteen, we were able to drop the threshold at which we offer our lead investigations to families from fifteen micrograms per deciliter down to ten. And then December twenty seventeen, the lead task force report was published. That was commissioned by our county executive, Rich Fitzgerald. And included a long list of recommendations that we've put a lot of into effect now and are still using to inform how we move forward with all that three-pronged approach that I was talking about. January first of twenty eighteen is when we put our universal blood lead testing regulation into effect. And then in June twenty eighteen, in response to that, to find a way to, to react to all the extra children that we were identifying through the increased blood lead testing, we were able to create three new full-time equivalent positions at the health department. Those folks are specifically focused on lead investigations. And at that time, we also reduced our level from ten down to five, which as Dr. Lanfer was saying, there is no safe level of lead. But right now, that, that level of five is the CDC's reference level. So that's a level that we can use right now to be able to react and say, we know that a child above that has an elevated blood, blood, blood level and we want to get out there to see what we can do. And then more recently in September of twenty nineteen, we were able to add a lead outreach nurse who has been a huge asset and performs education alongside our lead investigators and works with the family to try and help them do what they can to figure out how to bring their child's blood level down. So to give you an idea of some numbers that we're, we're dealing with, these are the number of children that were tested for lead over the past five years, basically ending in twenty nineteen. And we've got it separated by Allegheny County and the city of Pittsburgh, just so you can see. Twenty sixteen, like I said, is around when the Flint crisis became back in the national, led back in the national spotlight. So there was a bit of an increase between twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. We had been ramping up our activities. I hope that that, we influenced a few more people to get lead tested then, but obviously the significant jump comes when we enacted our lead screening, excuse me, lead regulation in January of twenty eighteen. So this next slide, this is just those twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen numbers. You can see it a little more specifically. From twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, we saw a twenty-eight percent increase in the number of children getting tested in all of Allegheny County. And then in the city, we saw a similarly significant, but a little bit less of an increase of sixteen percent from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen. And then for twenty nineteen, the numbers remained, hit it too soon, pretty consistent between in Pittsburgh and Allegheny County. We had about the same number of kids each year getting tested. So we at least stayed consistent. And then one other thing that we've seen as a result of having these increased tests performed, and I hope as a result of some of the work that we've been doing and that Michelle's group and many other community groups around the county have been working towards, we saw our elevated blood level rate coming down between twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen as well. So both in Allegheny County and Pittsburgh, we saw a decrease of about point nine percent. So that rate is the percent of children that got tested who actually did have that five plus level. So you'll see it's one point, down to one point eight, one percent in this, in the, all of Allegheny County. Whereas in the city, we have a bit more work to do. We're seeing a little more than twice that rate within the city of Pittsburgh. So this is a visual specifically of that rate that I'm talking about, that percentage. So it's, these represent the same thing as that percentage and you can see that the trend has been relatively consistent over the past five years. It's come, the, the difference between Pittsburgh versus the rest of the county has come down a little bit, but I think we can still, there's still some work to do and we can find ways to focus and get that, that disparity a little less extreme. And I also wanted to show you all some data based on your council districts. So these are numbers pulled from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, that same five-year period. On the left of your screen, you have the count, the number of children that have had that blood level above five. And then on the right, you have that percentage, the rate of the children who actually came back with the elevation. So on both charts, you can see that the, the areas with the highest rates and numbers of children do end up being one, districts one, three, six and nine. And then here we have a visual representation of, so the municipalities and boroughs are by municipality and borough. And then on this map, I kept it broken down by neighborhoods so that you can see within each of the city council districts, there are spots that are of greater concern than others. So I just wanted to pull that out so you could see that. And then this next map is the city councils, council districts overall. So you can see the darker blue indicates a higher rate of children with elevated blood levels. So three and one are the ones we should be paying most attention to there. And then the purple circles, the larger the circle, the higher the number of children with an elevated blood levels. You can see that the overlap between those things indicates that those are areas that we really need to focus a little more on and try and get some more resources and help to those families. So what does the health department do? What does my program do when we get these elevated blood levels for children? We are regularly surveying a system called PA Neds, which is basically just the Pennsylvania database where the tests are entered, the results of the tests are entered. So, we look at those and check for children under six years of age for that 5 and above level. Once we've identified them, we reach out to their doctor, get a referral, and make sure we have good contact information and then reach immediately out to the family to offer them an environmental lead investigation. And the goal of that investigation is to find that source of the exposure to that child. If the family is not interested in the lead investigation, for whatever reason, we do offer to provide them education over the phone and additionally, offer to submit a referral to early intervention services because any child who tests with an elevated blood level is eligible for those services. And I think that's a somewhat, not a very well-known fact. So, we like to make sure that families are aware of that and can take advantage of that resource if they haven't already known about it. Some stats on our investigations. Over the past five years, we've increased the number of investigations we're doing significantly. This 2017 was when we reduced the number from 15 down to 10. So, as you can see, that basically doubled our number in the county. And in general, the Pittsburgh numbers, the left column is all of the county and the right column is just within the city of Pittsburgh. So, the city of Pittsburgh pretty much represents consistently about 40 to 50% of the lead cases we have in the entirety of Allegheny County. So, you can see, we about doubled our cases in 2017 when we reduced the rate from, or the lead level from 15 down to 10. And then, mid-2018, it was June of 2018, when we reduced the level down again from 10 to 5. So, increased our numbers. And then, this past year in 2019, we had a record-high number of investigations at 134 homes. And like I said, about, about half of those were in the city of Pittsburgh, a little bit less than half. And then, when it comes to sources that we identified in these properties that we visited, so each home can have multiple sources identified, which is why these percentages obviously don't add up to 100. But we see a pretty consistent sources across Allegheny County versus Pittsburgh. Paint and dust are our two biggest culprits. As you can see, especially by the Pittsburgh number, we find lead-based paint. And this, to me, is a very stark representation. 97% of the Pittsburgh homes that we performed investigations and had some amount of lead-based paint. It does not necessarily mean that it was deteriorated and flaking off, but there's a lot of lead paint in homes. So, and then, the dust that is the next most common source in homes is created from that lead paint that's deteriorating and especially at odor windows that have lead paint, where the rubbing up and down of the windows opening and closing creates friction and causes that dust to just go everywhere in the home. And again, as Dr. Lanfer was saying, it's just such a small amount of that dust that can raise a child's blood level. So, those are the things we want to really be looking for. And then, soil, we always test bare soil. Water is not as much of a contributor, but it's something we want to keep an eye on to make sure because it can be, it can increase a child's blood level. And then, things like alternative sources or things like toys or spices or keychain or anything we find that might happen to have a lead content. So, what do we do on the lead investigation specifically? We're very proud of these. It's a very comprehensive inspection that we perform. We do a full-length questionnaire with the family to help pin down the areas of concern, any behaviors and activities that they might be doing that might help to identify where the exposure would be coming from. We do environmental sampling of water, bare soil, any bare soil that's on the property, and then dust, a minimum of eight dust wipes, four rooms, two per room. But it's pretty frequent that we're doing more than eight per home. And then, a full paint inspection and risk assessment with our x-ray fluorescence analyzer, which is a special piece of equipment that tests all the coated surfaces in the home for lead content. And then, we also document its condition, whether it's intact or deteriorated. And then, sit down before we leave that home to perform an educational session with the family, go over the report, review the areas of concern, and make sure that they have a grasp on how they can start right away activities that may help to reduce their child's blood level before we even have a chance to get them the report out. So, after the lead investigation, our investigators come back and compile a comprehensive lead-based paint risk assessment report. In the case of owner-occupied properties, we provide that to the owners and then offer to come back to perform clearance testing if they do perform remediation so that they can make sure that they did that work safely and aren't creating another lead-dust hazard that would increase their child's blood level. And then, for tenant-occupied properties, we provide a copy of that report, it's the same report either way, to both the family and the landlord. And then, we issue orders to the landlord to correct those lead hazards. And we follow up and move forward to enforcement and civil penalties if we aren't seeing compliance in the way that we would like. So, just wanted to talk a little bit about the primary prevention activities that we are currently performing, though, like I said, we seek to do more. And as Len said, we're always seeking to improve. There's tons of, tons of opportunity for us to make improvements. So, we want to continue to do that. But right now, the concrete forms of primary prevention that we are performing are that when we go out on our normal tenant-occupied housing inspections through the regular housing program, that's not necessarily associated with lead exposure, we offer education, advice, and literature to those families when we're in the homes. And then, we go out to any types of tabling events and presentations we can get our hands on to talk about lead safety. We encourage participation in ACED's Lead Safe Homes program where people can get lead hazards remediated, get that covered. They'll pay for that in full if the family is eligible. And then, when funding allows, we like to get the word out there, whatever way we can, by running bus ads, billboards, social media campaigns, and things of the like. Like I said, we seek to do more and we're dedicated to finding successful ways to further those efforts. And we very much appreciate any interest that the city has in partnering with us on any of those endeavors and look forward to continuing this conversation. So, thank you very much for your attention to this very, very important issue.
Thank you. I guess we'll pass it off to, and I think a partnership is something we definitely want to talk about. I know some other members are still with us. I know Councilwoman Gross is. I know Councilmember Wilson had to jump off. Michelle, do you just want me to go to council members? I know Councilwoman Smith is on as well. But I think what we want to get to is moving forward with legislation and things that we could talk about. I know my staff has already been in contact, but we're definitely gonna work with other members on this. I know Councilwoman Gross is obviously interested. So, I'll pass it off to Councilwoman Gross. I'm gonna have to switch to my iPhone. I have to get to a funeral home, but I'll be listening as I drive over. But Councilwoman, I'll pass the floor to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate you allowing me to be listed as a cosponsor on this post-agenda. This is a really important issue. I really learned a lot from the speakers today. I really, I've been working about, on these issues for years myself, trying to kind of further awareness. A huge thank you to Get the Lead Out campaign and to the county task force for kind of getting us to furthering this, this understanding, not just at the, you know, I think, population level or the constituent and consumer level, but also across all of our regulatory bodies, right? So, that we can, I think we're a lot closer now because of your work to being able to implement regulatory changes in a coordinated way. And that's our goal. So, Mr. Merritt, this is fantastic. I kind of wish we could just adopt what you've done today, yesterday. And, and I think that's where we need to go next, is to figure out, well, what is standing in our way? Right? I'm actually looking at a pretty big stack of papers next to me on my desk from years, and the accordion file is labeled just kind of like lead, paint, and demolitions and renovations. So, probably like Rochester, I looked a little bit on your Wikipedia page, Mr. Merritt, and I can see that the building stock is very similar in era, right? I've never been to Rochester, but I saw a lot of beautiful wooden homes, but also historic, lots of historic homes and lots of even historic apartment buildings. Those kind of, you know, I have that in my council district. I represent, as, you know, most, we all represent 1/9th of the city population. My district is less than 1/9th of the landmass, but almost every neighborhood is a historic trolley car neighborhood, save one that was a golf course until about 1950 up on top of a hill. But really, they were all trolley car neighborhoods. They all have houses that are 100 years old. Some of them here, where I'm looking, have kind of larger lot lines where I am in Highland Park. But some of them are, you know, 1860s, 1870s and, you know, side-by-side townhouses with only 15-foot lot lines. So, more than 100 years of paint, of layers, right, inside and outside. So, I'm District 7 on these charts. I actually have to, happen to have a hard copy of the same one from a meeting with you guys in 2018. That is, you know, so my council district isn't at the top, but we do have a lot of concerns about airborne lead as well as lead paint because my district by far leads the renovations and change of ownership. So, you know, let's say out of 35,000 people, there's, you know, let's say 20,000 dwelling units. But, you know, I don't know if it's lower or higher. I have almost entire neighborhoods that have been renovated, right? And so, like, I actually had an interconnect building permits and I was talking to Michelle about this last week. And one year, I think 2016, my district represented half of all building permits in the city, including those like renovating the kitchen, adding a deck, renovating the bedrooms, you know, converting the house mostly from multi-units where there'd been 100-year-old houses chopped up into apartments and then renting it back into a single-family. Complete, you know, top-to-bottom renovations, a $20,000 house being flipped and sold for $200,000. So, just top to bottom. And so, our regulations are not nearly good enough. You know, picture like open chutes coming out of a second-floor bedroom, all of that debris, down to the, you know, the supports, everything just being thrown out the window into an open dumpster in your, you know, 15-foot-wide house in side-by-side townhouses, right? You've impacted everybody's probably internal air quality. And I've had constituents complain to me that they borrowed one of the air monitors from our public library system, which you can do, which is a wonderful quality, right? So, she went and got the air quality monitor, brought it home into her living room and kitchen and had elevated lead levels because the person next door was having, you know, a contractor was scraping the paint. Right? Because if you're not a party wall, you're maybe three feet apart in a lot of my district. Contaminated soil is a big problem. And we're fortunate to have Allegheny County Conservation District bought one of those portable XRM, XRF machines. And I have them come out, not this year, but in previous years, to neighborhood events or farmers' markets so everybody can just bring their baggies of soil and have it instantly lead-tested. You know, I've taken it from my own backyard, kind of a baggie from the lot line, a baggie from the drip line, and a baggie from where I want to put in maybe, you know, some edible vegetables or something like that, and been able to just do multiple sites around my yard instead of wanting it all together. So, that's really helpful. What I'm concerned about, and I'm wondering, Mr. Merritt, if you can help us here, is that I've got notes in front of me again from conversations with our own building inspection, permits, licenses, and inspections, is what we call the department now, the, the office that issues permits for the city, does inspections and would issue citations, telling me like, absolutely not, we cannot do this. We cannot regulate that in any way, shape, or form. You know, we had multiple meetings with our director of PLI and she just was adamant that it would be illegal for us to do it because it's only EPA who can regulate lead. And we went back and forth. We had many meetings. You know, I got on the phone with the EPA office in Philadelphia, had back and forth there. I said, come on, like, what can we do? Can you deputize our inspectors? Like, what, how do we, why can't we figure out a solution here? And you've figured out the solution. So, you know, we're not the county, so we don't have that county health department, whereas some cities are their county and have that additional capacity. So, so what is the magic formula? Mr. Merritt, can you, like, how is it different? Like, how are you in Rochester? How did you get to yes and we've only gotten to no?
Well, you know, I think that's a very valid question is, you know, we dealt with that. And I think, you know, just in conversations earlier with some of my staff and just looking at what we do, it goes hand in hand with that problem of lead poisoning. You know, the things that we have to do to assess whether or not we're being effective is what are we requiring? So, if we require the owner to scrape and remove peeling paint or to use lead-safe work practices when a permit is being issued or a plumber to come in, open up a painted wall or electrician to do the same thing, are we requiring them to do it safely? And so, we asked them in the context of a code violation to mitigate those issues safely. And it all goes hand in hand. It has no reference or connotation to lead poisoning. But we know the results is going to reduce lead poisoning. So, we don't use the criteria of, you know, what most people would point out to be a health violation or a health concern that this is going to reduce that problem. But we know an effective will. It's
And our leverage is that we're, you're asking us for a permit.
Right.
And we can, we can define
Absolutely.
the way you are permitted to do this.
Absolutely.
And we can regulate and inspect and, and then, yes. And so, that's why I focused on the renovations and demolitions.
That's the key because all of our, all of that same information is put on our permit applications.
So, one of our weaknesses locally is if you're not ripping out your kitchen, stripping down to the studs or building now, and you're just merely renting out a unit, you probably have an occupancy permit that someone's asking you for.
That's exactly right.
We're not enforcing occupancy permits.
Well, you
So, that's a gap.
Well, you can still do the things that, you know, require this kind of work to be done, that if someone is, someone has a broken window and/or maybe even a cracked window, we know that there's a hazard that exists that turns actually into a medical hazard. Because if someone touches it, they're gonna get cut. You know, or, you know, some, some, you know, how severe, we don't know, but someone will get hurt.
So, if we can
Become a health issue or does it become a property maintenance issue?
So, even in, without occupancy permits being involved, you can respond to complaints, safety complaints.
Absolutely correct.
The way, we constantly have people reporting tripping hazards on sidewalks or, you know, those kinds of things. So, that, that kind of response can also trigger a citation that requires a clearance.
Absolutely correct. And many municipalities in upstate New York have gone that same way. They don't, the same kind of jurisdiction that Rochester has, but they put and put their sights on the same kind of outcomes.
Mm-hmm. I like it. So, then, my third kind of question about what Rochester did was the geographic targeting. So, again, we've had these conversations, but we failed to take action yet here in Pittsburgh of like, well, if we start, especially around occupancy permits, it's been, it's been, there's a problem here. There are people living in blighted conditions, whether they're free of lead or not. And it's, in the news at least once a year, something And it's, in the news at least once a year, something really unsettling, disturbing, and not okay is reported with some, some kind of tenants in some kinds of conditions. So, you know, where to start, right? When we're this kind of, when we have limited capacity? And I similarly have argued that we should be able to just say, you know, there are worse conditions in these places than others, so let us just do it geographically. We did this successfully at our water authority. I was, I've rolled off the board now, but I was on the board for five or six years during our lead scare. We had the same corporation in control of our water authority, Veolia Corporation, that Flint had in control of theirs. And so we were kind of about 10 months behind them in finding lead exceedance and then moving to rectify it. We've replaced more than half of the lead water service line so far, about 8,000, but we had to start somewhere. And I was on the board pushing for, to be able to replace not just half the line like the DEP was ordering us to, but, you know, we changed state law to be able to do the entire lead service line. I today have construction projects that are happening, still replacing those lines because I, I represent such older parts of the city. But we focused on the low and moderate income neighborhoods first, right? Where there was also a density of lead lines and where there was a density of children to the best that we could estimate by the census data, right? And so we were able, we just layered those three, those three GIS layers and those were our hotspots where we could, you know, it's a big deal to bring out a crew. It's not a $150 job to like paint, lead safe paint remediation might be, but these are, you know, could be eight to $20,000 a house to replace a line. We've gotten that down by having, you know, sometimes 100 houses on the street, a long street, being done in the same two or three days. But we, we did those in that priority order because those are the neighborhoods where people don't have the resources to do a $20,000 job themselves. And because for the public health reasons where there were the most children. And I feel like we should use that same urgency and that same kind of prioritization here that we also put up a map right away because like with paint, we didn't know where lead water service lines were. People hadn't kept track for 100 years. And so as we, I went out searching for them, literally looking in the ground in front of your house, we put them up on a map and that map is up there. We haven't done that in, in the city. And we could, I don't see anything stopping us from doing that right now, right? We can use the data even that we've already identified, right? From these, this is just one year. This is a couple hundred kids in the city who were identified and those homes, I assume, were inspected to see if they had lead paint. And so that data is there now for several years. So that, I don't see any prohibition. I, I would support putting it up on a map immediately.
You could, you could also come up with other ways to more accurately target the housing. For example, we have for a long time focused on pre-1978 housing.
That's what we did with water.
Was used until then, but much higher concentrations were used up until 1950s, into the 50s. And so the number, the percent of homes that contain a lead hazard will be much larger pre-1960. So there's different ways you can target housing to make sure that the populations you're most concerned about are being remedied first.
Right, like, you know, all of Lawrenceville. Like, I mean, that's one of the biggest neighborhoods I represent, right? 10,000 people usually, I can't think of a house that was built after 1960. So it, it definitely impacts my constituents. I am very concerned about it. And so I, I want to see, especially the first, the first things that can do when we don't have any regulatory barriers, where we have a clear path, we should be doing them now. My last question, I think, is to Ms. Horowitz. Thank you also for being here and, and being proactive. I applaud the county for making the lead, blood lead tests mandatory for newborns. When did that start then, 2017, I think?
January 2018, yeah.
January 2018. So are, it's in the information in front of me for 2018, is that 100% of newborns?
No, no. We, and we're starting actually to do a study now to figure out which kids were missing and how many. It takes matching birth certificates because of that time you're supposed to do it at one, around one and at around two years old. So we're trying to get down to that so we can focus on finding those populations that we are still missing and trying to figure out why we're missing them, what are the barriers there, and then trying to find how we can get those kids tested too.
Can you give us a ballpark? I mean, are we missing half? Are we missing more than half? How well are we doing?
I honestly don't have any kind of ballpark right now, sorry, but
Actually, this was talked about at the last Health Department meeting with the board and they estimated between 30 and 40% of the children were missing in terms of those being screened.
Okay, so we're doing more, we're doing, we're getting more than half. We're getting maybe 60, 70%, but we have to figure out, you know, why, as Ms. Horowitz said, why are we missing that remaining 30 to 40 so that we can figure out how to fix it? If you don't know what the problem is, then it's hard to fix.
Right. Just to give you a perspective, I don't think I've ever seen a city do better than 60 to 70%, which doesn't mean you won't try, but just to be realistic, those, for whatever reason, those last 30% are, are a challenge.
And another factor to consider too is that, that a lot of the tests that the kids are getting are what we call a screening test. It's just a capillary fingerprint and we get high rates of false positives on those, unfortunately, because the lead can get stuck in their fingerprint and then if it doesn't get wiped out well enough. So we also need to encourage people to be getting those follow-up tests to confirm the initial finger pricks. And that's another thing that we've been trying to work on is identifying those populations and trying to, again, find the barriers, figure out what's keeping them from being able to go out and get that, that follow-up test.
And one other
Interject it since I saw Councilman O'Connor on the move here. Corey, if you can hear me, if, if you need to interject your questions, I'll take a pause here.
Yeah, thank you. I try, sorry, I am walking in. Thank you, Councilwoman. I will just, you know, thank everybody for being here, especially the guests that joined. Councilwoman Gross, I know Council President Smith, Councilman Wilson, as well as Council, Councilwoman Strasburger, and I know Councilwoman Gross has talked about this a lot. I want to thank everybody for giving us sort of like heads up as to what other cities have done and how we can possibly do this. And I think, you know, with my colleagues, we'll be able to do something relatively quickly here in the city. But thank you guys very much. And I just really wanted to do that. I'm sorry, I have to run in family obligations here, but thank you very much.
And I also saw Councilman Lavelle, so I wanted to acknowledge him as well.
So since I took a pause, can I ask if any other members are, have comments or questions? Councilwoman Smith, Councilman Lavelle, I'm not sure if I can see everybody still here. Who do we still have? I don't see Councilman Lavelle right now either. We might have lost him as well.
I think a few have, have dropped off in the last couple of minutes.
Okay, so, so yeah, I interrupted some of our speakers. Mr. Merritt, I think you're about to respond also. Can't remember myself.
Was going to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to add that one of the things that we have focused fairly extensively on is screening children. And there's some value to that, of course, but the ultimate goal would be to screen the houses, to find the hazards and eliminate them in the first place because inadvertently, by focusing so heavily on screening children, we will fail to protect them, right? We don't act until we find a kid who's lead poisoned. What we should be doing is acting once we find an elevated dust lead level or peeling paint chip so that we actually can prevent those children, that child from being poisoned in the first place. So just to balance out the amount of effort we put on screening children and screening the sources.
I wanted to, music to my ears. Thank you very much. I was going to, that would be my comment as well. I just wanted to, for the folks still on the line, just say thank you for, in terms of all of the council members who have been very generous with their time over the course of the last year where we've been having this conversation and begun to talk about primary prevention strategies. And, you know, we heard from you and we took that information to heart and we went back and we did our research. We did our investigations. We talked to colleagues in other cities. We talked to some national partners who do this work as well. And we compiled all of that information in the research that we've done to be able to put strategies together to, for you all to review and react to and to begin a dialogue in terms of how do we take a comprehensive approach to lead from a primary prevention standpoint to reducing the exposures and reducing the harms so that we don't have to screen children, that we get to Rochester's numbers that they have been able to accomplish in, in a short period of time. And so we, we want to share all of that information with you in the upcoming weeks to sit down and strategize and see, you know, we think we have a, a pretty good sense of what would work best for Pittsburgh, but we need to hear from all of you because, you know, you hear from constituents and, and you all know what works best in terms of policy initiatives. And so this is, I think, an opportunity for community. As Len had talked about earlier, it takes lots of different voices, different parts of the community and sectors, all who touch lead, who are part of our coalition building to work together hand in hand to find those solutions. And so I think that that's the exciting part is that we've heard from our experts today in terms of the health impacts, the sources of exposure, and the strategies that are being taken across the country. And so now it's an opportunity for us to do that right here within our city. And I can't think of a better way to celebrate Lead Poisoning Prevention Month, next month in October, to really think about some action steps that we can all take here locally. And, you know, think about how we protect not only everyone, we heard about both children and adult health impacts, how do we protect those who are here today, but also our next generation? And, you know, let's think about what we need to do for the sake of our kids. So I didn't want to interrupt Councilwoman Gross. So if you have other things that you would like to ask of our experts, they're here. We can get all of their email addresses and for all other council members, we can get you connected with each of them to ask the questions. Dr. Lanfier, in addition to being a physician and scientist, is a professor of health sciences at Simon Fraser University, and we can connect you with him through that contact. As you know, Mr. Merritt, certainly with Rochester and with our own local source of information and, and help is with Lori through the Health Department. But if you have other questions, I'm sure they might be able to take a couple before, hopefully. I know that everyone has obligations and so we have a, thank you for
Wrapping it up because we're like, you know, it's almost 2:45. But absolutely, if we can make sure that we get, Michelle, you can help us have an email version of your presentations. They were captured here in our, but our legislative record is merely video, so it's hard to share and refer to. So for, you know, to have a PDF emailed would be incredibly helpful and that way we can share it as well around in, as we're working on things. And contact information would be incredibly helpful. I know that we'll be continuing this conversation among council members and council members do re-watch this. We'll also share that this will be available on the city's new YouTube channel. Since we're working remotely, all of our council sessions and this post-agenda are official legislative record. And so they are both on the city's website and the Legislative Information Center. But here in the new COVID era, we've discovered YouTube, which is incredibly helpful because it's actually a lot easier for citizens. And so we'll have a link straight to the YouTube channel where people can watch this and share it. And we'll be happy to do that as well. We all, of course, have our own social media outlets.
And you mentioned COVID. And so that's why this is more important now than ever is that we've got lots of people spending lots of time in their homes. And so the time is so significant.
Exposure time is so much higher, right? Absolutely.
Thank you for your co-hosting of this session today, too. It's been incredibly helpful and I hope beneficial to you and all of your fellow members of council.
Well, since I'm the last one standing here, I can both motion to adjourn and call us adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for sharing your time.
Thank you.